Okay, I will read the notice, Town of Wheatfield, Notice of Public Hearing. Please take notice, a public hearing will be held at the Wheatfield Town Hall on April 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Council chambers regarding the appropriateness of allowing in the offer is rising, the temporary road closure and use of Indicon Drive West and Indicon Drive East at the Vantage International Point Office Park for bicycle racing as proposed by Jonathan Rosen for the Criterion Bicycle Racing to occur ten events during the summer of 2018. Anyone interested may attend and be heard.
John's gonna make a brief presentation, and once the presentation is done, we'll open it up for questions. Go ahead, John.
Supervisor McSwan, members of the council, thank you very much for granting this hearing. My name's Jonathan Rosen, I'm licensed as a race director by USA Cycling. I'm proposing a ten-week series of Criterion-style bicycle races on the roads around Vantage International Point. This includes Indicon Drive East and West. With respect to traffic safety and in consideration of the businesses in the park, have two people handling traffic control at the entrance to the park, and another eleven people assigned to each business's driveway. There will also be signage around the park informing people to race, and I will contact each business to discuss how we can inform their staff about the event. During the races, we'll ask any drivers to stop and wait no more than one minute when the races are approaching to allow them to safely pass. After the race group has passed, traffic can proceed in the same direction behind the bikes to their destination. It's my belief and my goal that all traffic will be allowed into and out of the park during the race, and that no one will be turned away. I look forward to working cooperatively with the Town of Wheatfield and the business owners of Vantage International Point to make this event safe and successful. Now yield the podium.
John?
John, if you want to stand up there in case anybody has questions, which I'm sure there will be some questions, and that way we'll, you know, be at the microphone and everybody will be able to hear what you have to say. Any questions?
Uh, Dan, you had told us earlier when we first started, you were gonna go to each business and talk to them about it. Did you, did you go to each business?
Right. I haven't started that yet. In consultation with Kurt Doctor, we met last Thursday at the, at the park, and we surveyed the park, and we discussed some of the logistics, and I thought it would be appropriate to get through this hearing first, through the public hearing, and then upon approval of the board and the results of the public hearing, I'll go forward and start working with the businesses in the park. I thought it'd be premature to contact the businesses in the park-
I was just wondering what the businesses had to say, if you went, went to, you ran into any opposition, or when you went to the businesses?
I did have an extensive conversation with Dean Wood from Border Works Logistics. We spoke for over a half an hour, and he shared his concerns with me. I made it clear to him that safeties are number one priority, and keeping the park open for business is also a priority. So, he was concerned that we would be preventing anybody or turning away trucks, and I said, "Under no circumstances will anyone be turned away."
Okay, John, uh, Gil, just so you know, I don't know if you got this email from Kurt.
Yeah.
Kurt is out of town this week, could be in California, but Kurt actually did meet with several of the owners that had some concerns, and he felt, and maybe they're here tonight, that their questions have been answered. They were concerned that the road was gonna be completely closed, and that their employees would not be able to leave, and in fact, some trucking may not be able to come in and out also. He had told me, and he has an email here, that he thinks he has satisfied anyone, or any of the problems, or any of the questions, and that were answered while he met with them. He also sat out, and during the race times, observed twenty-five to thirty-five cars passing through. I don't know if you got that email?
Right. So, we were there between six o'clock and eight o'clock on Thursday.
Right.
And during that first hour, we had about twenty cars that entered and exited the property, and there were three trucks. Between seven and eight, dropped down to about five cars and no trucks.
Okay. You know, John, as, as, I mean, I, just to be a little more particular, I mean, we pretty much know, but as, as the races start, um, the, the time period for a race would be-
So, we have three races, three adult races and two kids' races scheduled. The adult races go thirty-five, thirty, forty-five, and sixty minutes in duration. The first ones are six o'clock and goes for thirty minutes. Takes about four minutes for them to do a lap around the park, parks one point three miles. So, you know, at any given point, the racers could be out of sight. So, it's entirely possible, and our goal is that anybody who does enter the park would probably never see the bikes. They would either be behind them, or the bikes would be on the other side of the course when they're driving to their destination.
And how will that be controlled, John?
Through the volunteers that I described. We'll have two at the entrances, and then I wanna have additional staff at each parking lot, so that if somebody's leaving their business, they finish work at six-thirty, and they drive out, and they're unaware of this race going on, we're gonna have a volunteer to stop them and coordinate that, so that they're not either driving into the cyclists in the same direction, in the opposing direction, or leaving right in front of them.
Okay. Any questions, John, on, on the traffic law?
Are they, uh, I don't know if we've heard from the Niagara County IDA yet, but is that parking lot secure? Is that gonna be where you're gonna stage?
That's my intent. So, I do plan to contact them after tonight's hearing. That's my next step, is to go forward with, with securing their, um, rights to their, their parking lot and ensuring them for the use of the parking lot. So, our insurance covers, and will cover, we'll have, um, insurance for both those, for both Town of Wheatfield and for, um, for Niagara IDA. I understand they went through a transition recently. There was a death in the, um, the Director's Office, and there's a new staff person there, so I thought it was, it was kinda prudent to give them a few weeks to settle in before we approached them. So, so in the coming weeks, I plan to meet with them and, and get that finalized.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else?
I was just concerned about the, the bikes spreading out and, and the cars. I guess there's no way they could really wait until a race is over. You say thirty minutes is the shortest race.
Right.
I just have a, a fear of vehicles on this track while bicycles are racing. I just, I know you say they're gonna follow the, the flow of the bicycles, I just-
Right. So, the two considerations are, we want the cars going in the same direction as the bikes and not heading into them. So, that's part of the coordination and the signage that we'll have, to make it clear that there's one direction for traffic. Um, the second thing is, the way the races usually flow, the majority of the racers stay together in a group. And then, if, if a racer can't keep up with the group, they're riding by themselves, they're usually riding at the side of the road. So, in that case, it's no different than if they're on a public street, they would follow the same rules of the road. What we're really trying to do here is, when we have the lead group, the lead group could bunch up and could take up a full lane. So, we wanna give them absolute safety and make sure there's no chance that they'll cross paths with the car.
Anything else, John?
Another question, you know, do you understand that they want to bunch up the lead group?
The lead group, yeah.
And, um, about how many, how many people are there?
Uh, the women's race, typically we get about, there's about twenty people that attend women's races, and then for the men's races, it could be between forty to sixty. Ideally, if we're wildly successful, it could be even more than that, but optimistically, I'd be happy with thirty racers, thirty or forty racers. They usually ride two across, two abreast, so it's less than a, than a car lane that they're using. The issue, though, is that at any given point, somebody could be passing. So, we wanna ensure there's a safe margin, that if one bike decides to pass another bike, there's enough room for them to pass without having to squeeze by a car.
Maybe some of the tri-county ambulance is gonna ask you, you know, what are you telling the county owner? Do you, do you have something on schedule?
Yeah. So, uh, we made arrangements with the tri-county ambulance to be present on site, so, right.
In the motion packet for tonight, uh, again, on the second or third page, there's like five, uh, criteria or stipulations attached to that motion, but I don't, I don't see anything on there as far as securing a, uh, parking lot to stage this. And I, I think that would be pretty significant, if we could add a sixth stipulation, that, you know-
That's really contingent on IDA, if their property, and if their parking lot, so-
But if you don't get the IDA, where are you gonna put, you're gonna put everything in the street? You're gonna use somebody else's parking lot?
No. Yes. So, if IDA refused us, we'd approach one of the other businesses. And if none of the businesses, um, support it, then, then that would, um, that would end it, so we wouldn't pursue it.
Okay. You know, Larry, maybe we should make a note in there and add that to the list of things, that an appropriate area be designated for the starting and storage of bicycle prior to racing, so whether the IDA or another area that's secure, it won't be in the middle of the road.
But if you have sixty men racing, there's probably sixty vehicles coming in with them.
True.
And if you have forty women racing, there's probably forty, unless it's husband and wife.
Right.
So, you're gonna have over a hundred or more vehicles.
Not simultaneously. So, each race ends, the people leave, and the next group comes in, so-
Okay. So, you're gonna have fifty or more vehicles at a time parked someplace.
True, true. That IDA lot has two hundred lots. There's two hundred spaces in the, in the, uh-
And I think that it's a good idea that we, we add that there'll be a secure area for the parking of vehicles and bicycles.
Right. That's part of the appeal of the IDA lot, is that-
Yeah.
Their lot is the only lot that has entrance and exit on Indicon Drive off of the course. The cars can come in without having to go onto the racecourse, and can exit without going through the racecourse.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thanks.
One, one more question. Uh, now, you're, you're not gonna need our law enforcement or our constables, you're gonna handle your own EMPs for the tri-community?
Right.
Will, will you need our constables to-
I don't need them, but if they're available, I'd, I'd-
They, they cost money.
I'd be fine.
Yeah, it would be fine, but we pay for it.
Yeah. We had, we had discussed, um, I talked to Robin about it, and John and I talked, uh, early on, that if a constable was needed for traffic to fall on a town road, that we'd discuss it in the future. It was nothing.
Sure, I'm open to that. I'd be happy to, um, incorporate the constables, and, and we pay for it.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, anyone else? Any questions? Oh, boy, now we have questions. Okay. Yes, sir. Yes?
Uh, hi. Uh, I'm Jason Cordova. I'm one of the owners. I own General Pizza Log, or if you can endorse them. Uh, I guess first things first, I was never contacted by you or anyone in New York State. I was just, you know, we're dealing with folks that have been, we talked about communication and stuff. I mean, it is, we have a conference. So, I, I have to think of this part. Any questions? Number one-
Would you do me a favor? If you'd come up to the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Again, so, I'm Jason Cordova from Original Pizza Log. So, my first concern, and again, I'm, I'm an active guy, I'm a former Army captain, used to be in a special forces unit, liked to work out, I'm a big advocacy for these kinda things. My biggest concern is this. In a perfect world, I would support it, but we don't live in that world, we live in a litigious world. So, as soon as we had this meeting, I saw this come across, I contacted two of my attorney buddies, and I asked them, I said, "Listen, if you had somebody sign a waiver saying they would not sue, would you advise your clients to sue me?" And they both said, "Yeah." If somebody broke their leg, got a concussion, whatever the case may be, I'm gonna get sued. I'm probably gonna win, but it's still gonna cost me time and my money, things of which are valuable to me. So, on the surface, I have a concern about that, litigious. Secondly, I have a concern about, kinda preemptively, communication. You know, this didn't start, I didn't hear from you when you talked to other business owners, so I, I could ask you later, but why didn't you knock on my door? But most importantly, what I think matters for my business compared to maybe some other businesses here, is that we are, my business is inspected federally every single day by the USDA from zero-one until zero-one-thirty the next day. So, we have constant federal inspection by the USDA. They come whenever they want, whenever they want. They come out without notice. I'm also inspected by the FDA and the New York State Ag and Markets. These are people that I do not know, most of which provide surprise visits. I don't know when they're gonna come. If they see somebody impeding the road, they may have enough common sense to say, "You know what? We better go through. I have a place to inspect." Or, they're gonna say, "You know what? Forget it. I'm not gonna inspect." And you know what happens? This is what happens. And I'll read it, the headline. Quote, "Pride of Iowa Sandwiches Recalls Pork, Chicken, and Beef Products Because They Are Produced Without the Benefit of Inspection." If one of these inspectors turn around and do not come to our building, I get an automatic recall. I work too hard, provide too many jobs, and do the right thing every single day to provide our customers with the best possible product, every single day. To risk my business for a bicycle race ten times is a big ask, and I cannot support, unequivocally cannot support. I wish you the best, but I cannot support risking my business. Thank you.
Uh, before you sit down, um, let me ask you a question. These inspectors come randomly every day?
Every single day.
And you're talking, all these inspectors come every day, or just one?
The USDA comes every single day, no matter what.
And, and your feeling is that if they did come, and his folks guided you, guided them through to your plant, that they're gonna turn and go the other way?
My concern is if they saw a, in any type of impediment, they would turn away. I don't know some of these inspectors. Some I can call. You're asking ten different events, so sometimes they may say, "I can call an inspector that I think will be on, on call." And say, "Listen, there's gonna be an event tonight. They're gonna stop at the gate, just wait to push you through." But they always rotate, so I don't not, I don't know who's gonna come. That's my concern. That's just for the, that's just for the USDA. You factor in the FDA, which I do not know, and the Ag and Markets would show up whenever they want, I, I just can't risk it. I, I, I wanna support you. I mean, I, I, this is just a big, this is just too big a risk for me. A product recall would kill me. I worked too hard to avoid one, and to have one for something like this, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I appreciate what you're saying. Um, I, I just would be surprised that if an inspector came, and there was somebody willing, wanna be a counsel, someone to take him to your business, that, that he's gonna turn around, "Well, I'm not going because I gotta go around some traffic."
But what if they do?
Well, I mean, that can happen anywhere. It can happen on the boulevard, or in an accident, so. I'm just saying, you know, you're, you're saying that I don't want it to happen because, uh, an inspector may not get to my place. Um-
It's a very large risk. I mean, this is, this is a recall. My, my products get distributed throughout the country, and in Puerto Rico, and other countries now.
I understand.
How would I, how would I, you know what? A recall costs a quarter million dollars at a minimum. Are you asking me to risk a quarter million dollar recall on all the bad publicity for a bicycle race?
No, I, I, what I'm asking, I guess, what I'm asking is, can the inspectors be contacted?
I don't know who the inspectors are. They are, they're on a circuit, they're on a so, sometimes they rotate, and they do it by design. They do it-
So, there's no way of contacting these inspectors, huh?
I can contact the one inspector for the region out of Philadelphia, but, but the guy who's there tonight, no idea who's gonna be there tonight. None. Say it. They come from, they're from a region, so they, they rotate.
I mean, they must have someone that they answer to. Oh, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm also looking at a community event that a lot of people are in favor of also. You know, I, I understand, now we have someone that's negative, and there's probably gonna be more. But if there is any way that those inspector services can be contacted and say, "Hey, look, on Av- on, on Thursday nights, and so-and-so, this is what's happening. Can we make arrangements not to make those inspections in for the summer months?" I mean, it's worth a phone call, that's all I'm asking.
I, I can make a phone call, but I don't know who's gonna answer. Like, it's, the, the FDA has been by once in six years. What if they decide to come that day? I don't know who it's gonna be. Like, that, that's a big risk. And again, I, I'm, I work out seven days a week. I would love to, to be on board, but I, my risk is a little different than some others, perhaps, in, in, in the park. Um, any other questions you have for me?
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name again, sir?
Jason Cordova.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you give us your name, please, and where you're from?
Yes. My name is Joel Jaffe. I live on Lockport Road adjacent to what was Indicon Park, now Vantage.
Okay.
Uh, before I mention what I was gonna mention, I would just say to this gentleman, if he does get a recall because of his bicycle race, he's gonna recourse to the town. He would probably end up suing the town for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or whatever it cost him. You're putting yourself into that possible position. Uh, my question for you, is, is this nonprofit?
No, this is a private event. It's, um-
I'm sorry?
It's a private event. It's not, it's not a nonprofit event. So, I'm responsible, as the race director, I'm responsible for all the income and all the expenses on it. So, the idea is, they're, they're generally small revenue events. They don't, they're not multi-million dollar events we're putting on. These are pretty small-scale events.
Okay. And are, are you a Town of Wheatfield resident?
I am not. I'm a Town of Amherst resident.
Of Amherst?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, several things bother me about this event. One of them is liability. Give it to people. The Buffalo News, the Buffalo News, on July first, there was an article about a young girl who was on her, she called it a longboard, I guess it's a skateboard. And she was in Lewiston, and she was on the board on the street, or on the sidewalk, and she saw a curb, but she was only twenty-one years old, so she doesn't know that a curb was higher than the sidewalk, I guess. So, she crashed into the curb, fell down to some serious injuries to her. So, I'm not making fun of her, 'cause she's got major problems now. Her own fault, sued the Town of Lewiston. Uh, she was given three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. It was a million dollar settlement, but other, other people got part of the settlement, uh, part of the, uh, liability of the settlement. Then, on July first, Town of Amherst, her hometown, a woman went into a park, and a pack of dogs apparently ran into her, knocked her over, broke her leg, or something like that. And she is now suing Town of Amherst. She was in a dog park, and a dog knocked her over, and she's upset that dogs are in the dog park because, I don't know why, but it's her fault. She's there with dogs, and she's blaming the town for dogs, and she's suing them. The point is, you can have liabilities, you can have waivers, you can have anything you want. Somebody falls down on a bike, they're gonna sue the building in front because it was your fault. They're gonna sue the town because you shouldn't have allowed it. They're gonna sue you, and they're gonna sue anybody that was the builder, that put in the highway, that forgot to fill in the crack in the ground. They sue everybody. And whether they collect or not, the town is put on a liability notice. You have a lawyer that you have to, maybe you have to have an outside lawyer if you don't use your own. If they do collect, your insurance is gonna pay it, and your liability, your insurance rates will probably go up. So, you're looking at something that could be a potential problem for you. I'm not saying it is a problem, but it's a potential problem. Another thing is, you're gonna have probably a couple hundred people, more than a couple hundred people, they're all gonna stop and McDonald's on the way, and drop their wrappers on the side of the road. I live on the cor- just about on the corner of Indicon Drive and Lockport Road, and we have an open storm sewer. Our storm sewer is filled with trash from people throwing out their car windows, and this is around the corner. I can't imagine this not happening. We lived in that neighborhood because we're the farm community, and it was always a quiet neighborhood. Our family, my wife's family originally owned a property that you, that's not Indicon. Her last name was Walk, and they owned that property for about a hundred and fifty years, up until recently, when Norman sold it to, to the, the current developers. We sit on our back terrace in the summertime. So, you're saying for a week and a half of the summer, we're gonna have to sit on our back terrace and hear screaming and yelling, "Hooray, go team," whatever they yell. You're gonna hear a lot of it. It's not gonna be quiet, and it's gonna disrupt us, as well as my neighbors. I'm speaking, I'm sure, for my neighbors. But we're gonna have that problem too. Also, if there's some kind of calamity, fire breaks out, you're gonna tell the kids on the bike, "Slow down, pull over, because a fire truck is zipping through." It's not gonna happen. You're just gonna have a problem with it, and you're not gonna know how to handle it. I always heard this situation where you take a sheet of paper, if you have something, you try to decide. You write on one side the pluses, on the other side the minuses, and then looking at the paper kinda gives you an idea which, which way you should go. I'm looking at the pluses, and I'm thinking, "Well, somebody from out of town wants to come in, make a few bucks on the bike race, bringing kids from out of town, bringing Canadians. They're not gonna shop in our town when they're all done, because they're all sweaty on their bikes. They're not gonna go anywhere. And it's gonna be ten o'clock at night, there's no place to go anyway." So, we're not gonna get any benefit from that. But on the negative, we're gonna have noise, we're gonna have traffic congestion, we're gonna have po- probably some litter, I wouldn't doubt that. We have a possibility of a car accident from all the people that are around. We're gonna have cars probably parking in on some of the, some of the vendors' properties, and we're opening ourselves up to liability. That's on, on the other side of the ledger. I cannot see any reason why we should allow this. If it was a nonprofit, you might say, "Well, they're helping cancer, they're helping MS." Maybe you wanna bend a little bit, give it to them, but for, for someone to make a profit using our facilities, not paying our taxes, not paying our maintenance, not paying for the snowfalling anything, come in and use our stuff. What's the benefit to us? Why would we want something like this? Thank you.
Thank you. John, I wanna respond a little bit. Could you touch on insurance, just a bit?
So, regarding the insurance, um, as a race director from USA Cycling, uh, I have access to all the resources of USA Cycling, which is a national organization. They put on three thousand events a year, and they are our representative to the Olympic Committee. So, the racers that are attending this race have the opportunity to participate in the national ranking system and be recognized on a national level. Um, this is arguably, this is the starting point for the Olympics. Um, all across the country, people are putting on bike races in office parks, and we've had examples in prior years. We've had young men, young women that showed up in sneakers and raced their bikes for the first time, and won, and then went on to greater stages, and became national representatives from our hometown. So, with respect to what it does for the community, we have the opportunity here to put Wheatfield on the map as, as a very special place in New York State to start bike racing. Um, we can do something here that we can't do anyplace else. The Indicon Park is unique in its layout, um, the traffic control is unique, the shape, the design, the dimensions of the course are perfect. Um, so, I think there's a, a huge upside and a big benefit to the community for having this event, because nobody else can do this event.
All right. Wait a minute. This gentleman has a floor, and we can, we'll speak again, sir. Yes?
Does name Mark Spitz need anything to you?
Sure.
How about Muhammad Ali?
Of course.
I can think of others. They all won the Olympics. Muhammad Ali, fifty million, a hundred million dollars. Where is it? Where's, what happened? So, some guy from Amherst wins the Olympics, and he becomes a gold medal champion?
The, the payoff, if I, if I can answer that-
What is that gonna do for you? What is that gonna do for us?
I can tell you what the answer is. The answer, the payoff isn't enriching somebody's life and making one person a millionaire. The payoff is a community having the opportunity for people to participate in an event that's unique and to excel at it, that they might otherwise never participate in. So, we're doing something here, bringing something into Wheatfield, and bringing people to Wheatfield to do something they can't do so, anyplace else. And, and I think that's unique and special in its own right. We're not looking to make millionaires, uh, we're not looking to send people to the Olympics, but this is the starting point, and it's all about creating opportunities. So, we have this unique opportunity in partnership with the Town of Wheatfield to create this opportunity.
Well, if, if, if you need a space to do it-
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Could you tell me about the noise?
Um, cycling, because of its speed, it's not a, the greatest spectator sport, so in other events, we really don't have crowds of people cheering. Um, the races are short, at a half an hour, forty-five minutes. The racers are really only in view for twenty seconds or thirty seconds. So, I'd really be surprised if you, if you were to hear anything, even standing on the course. Um, it's not like a soccer game. It's a different kinda dynamic. Um, with respect to your earlier question regarding litter, as the race director, I take responsibility, and I take pride in the racecourse, um, and I take ownership for everything that goes on. So, the buck starts and stops with me. So, that means everything that's, that's brought to the racecourse is packed up and is cleaned up. So, I will be there, however late it takes, and however much time it takes, to ensure that all the garbage, anything that's produced by any racers, any litter that's dropped, gets picked up in the parking lot, gets picked up in the street. And my goal is to leave the place as good and not better than when I found it.
I would, I would suggest you try Community College Parking Lot, or Starfront School, if they have a racetrack. No cars on the road, and, and they're ready for you. That would be my place to go, and then, and the kids that go to, and they'll be in the Olympics, can still have a place to go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Give your name, please, and the residence.
I'm, um, speaking on behalf of Dean Wood at Border Works Logistics Gateway Center. Um, he's out of town today, so if he would like me to read this to you all. Um, unfortunately, I received this notice of the hearing on Monday, March twenty-sixth, and my schedule was already set to be out of town on April sixteenth. Therefore, I have asked my associate to read into the public record my opposition to this proposal. The business in the Vantage Industrial Park pay a lot of the property taxes required for the town to provide roads and access to our places of business. That amount is extremely high, and as such, all the businesses, including our businesses, have to work very hard to earn what is necessary to support the taxes that the town requires. In order to accomplish this, my business operates seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, to allow tough traffic to enter our facilities. Furthermore, our facility is used by US Customs for sensitive matters of restricted cargo, as well as an after-hours cross dock for carriers transferring shipments between carriers. If this plan is approved, our property, which is the largest street front affected by the proposal, will be effectively cut off to any access for us to do business during the period of setup, performing and teardown of the races. As you can imagine, this is unacceptable. Our research indicates your organization charges fees for the racers, and effectively is a business. As such, they do not pay or contribute to the ch- As such, they do not pay or contribute to the tax base that pays for the roads, maintenance, school taxes, and others that the businesses in the park do. However, you are suggesting by this proposal that they would have unencumbered access to the very property that we pay for. In addition, the research indicates they wish to run these races on Thursday evening from six to nine P.M. This timeframe is the peak of truck traffic entering our facility. All our Canadian shipments arrive to our warehouse daily between six and nine P.M. This would effectively shut down our operations. At the same time, we have multiple carriers arriving to collect outbound shipments during that same time period. Due to the designation of our facility as a US Customs bonded warehouse, there cannot be restricted access, except for extreme emergencies. We even had the power lines buried under the entrance to ensure that even an ice storm could not shut down our business, and we installed a generator to ensure during a power failure, our full operations would continue. Our business is community-minded. However, we cannot support any activity that would completely block access to our business, even for a brief period of time. Further to this, there is an issue of any damage to our property from signage debris, spectator garbage, and even rust left from vehicles during setup and teardown. This will fall undoubtedly to the business owners. As such, I don't know this organization, have no comfort level that they will not cause undue work after they finish. Finally, there is a liability issue. In your judicial system in the United States, everyone sues everyone for literally anything. Should anyone twist an ankle or worse, in or near my property, regardless of the insurance the organization should have, we will be named in any suit. As such, I will have to employ a legal defense, and that is a risk I am not prepared to take. In conclusion, should the town choose to grant this permission, I will have no choice but to be preemptive in filing a suit against the town of Wheatfield and the organizers for the loss of business associated risks to my property, as well as I have to include in the statement of claim the need to increase my all-risk insurance to protect my business and me personally against any potential legal actions that any member of this organization or attending public could initiate before, during, or after the event. Finally, our facility is equipped with very sensitive security, both inside the billing, building, and the grounds surrounding the building. Should any attendees of these events find themselves moving anywhere close to the building, the emergency response detection will be tripped, and you will have emergency vehicles entering into your venue to attend the building. This includes, but is not limited to police, fire, EMS, and homeland security. In addition, my managers, who carry special response equipment in their vehicles, must arrive with their vehicles to deactivate any alarm that is tripped. This will pose a serious risk to the attendees of these events. In conclusion, the park is used extensively by all members of the park to walk on a daily basis. The town decided, for whatever reason, cannot install proper sidewalks, and as such, truck traffic has to navigate, navigate sometimes large groups of pedestrians on a normal day. That in and of itself is a huge risk to public safety and will be addressed at another time. This, however, is a risk that is totally preventable and should not be allowed to happen in this park. Thank you.
Can I have a copy of that, miss? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Susan Lyndon, and I'm interim executive director of the Niagara County IDA. So, uh, I'm hearing some details about the project for the first time tonight. We knew a little bit from what we read in the paper. Um, at first brush, it didn't sound very good to us because of liability and other reasons. Keep in mind, this is an industrial park, and we worked for the last twenty years to get companies in there, companies who have invested millions of dollars each and hire and employ hundreds and hundreds of people who work at various times in the park. So, I mean, this is our livelihood, like Mr. Cordova says, it's not, I mean, it would be very nice to have this race, and, and I'm not against the idea either, but this is not the venue for it. Um, people's livelihoods are depending on it, and as far as using the IDA's parking lot, be totally up to our board. I'm happy to meet with you, get more details about your project, um, and we can let our board know and see if they would, if that was something they'd be interested in. But, um, just, uh, and Mr. Jaffe brought up a lot of points that we worry about too as landowners in the park, that being debris, um, liability, someone falls off the bike, being sued, everybody, uh, in the park being sued. We are a landowner, so we are, we might be one of those people as well. So I'll give you my card, and we can talk.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Uh, good evening. Supervisor Exwan, counsel, thanks for the opportunity to make my case here. My name is David Chamberlain. I live in Ten Kingston Circle in Lockport. I'm not a resident of the town, but I do have a significant piece of property in the, in the park. Matter of fact, I own sixteen acres in there and two of the largest buildings, and represent the majority of the employees. Uh, one of my tenants is Edward's Vacuum. They are absolutely opposed to this proposition, as am I. They have two shifts. They started out with, uh, around a hundred and twenty-five people, they're now two hundred and thirty people, they're hiring fifty more. They have a second shift. They, they do a lot of their trucking at night. Uh, the other building I have is, uh, that, that's sixty-four thousand square feet. The other building I have is a multi-tenant building. There's not a lot going on there at night, a couple of the tenants. The one that's the most concerned is, is the New York Bus Company. They have about twelve, uh, small buses there. They service Niagara County for physically handicapped, emotionally disturbed, uh, at-risk children, uh, so taking them to and from school and after-school activities, and they come in, uh, after hours, pick up, leave their buses, pick up their cars. And, uh, they're opposed to it, as again, am I. Uh, that, like other people in there, I purchased that land thinking, "This is an industrial park." Never in my wildest dreams did I think it was gonna be a, a bicycle circuit for racing. And, uh, I take exception to some of the things this gentleman said. Uh, for instance, he stated that the bicyclists are grouped. Oh, you get a race that's an hour long, they're not gonna be grouped, they're gonna be spread all over the place. They're gonna be at both ends of it. Uh, it's gonna be difficult for trucks to get in and out. Uh, trucks are gonna have, he says, they're gonna have to wait. Well, if you get two or three trucks backed up, that creates a little bit of chaos too. Uh, and where are they gonna back up, and where are they gonna hold, the holding area for trucks? I'm concerned with the litter. He can do all he wants to pick it up, but you get a little bit of windstorm on that night, you got McDonald's bags, you got, uh, uh, Tim Hortons boxes, you got paper cups, beer cans all over the place, places that, in, in the bushes and around the buildings. I've seen this happen before, and it's, it's, it's completely unacceptable. And I'm surprised that, uh, I even have to come here and defend such a, a, a position, because it's unreasonable to expect us to put up with it. Uh, so I'm, and my tenants, together we have around three hundred and fifty tenants in there, and my two buildings, uh, three hundred and fifty employees, and they're, they're all opposed to it, as am I. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Anyone else?
Good evening. Eric Nowakowski. I live on Catherine Drive in Wheatfield, right behind the Old Summer Park Mall. And, uh, just wanted to hit on three quick points. To, to start with, I'm very happy that you are looking at the opportunity to do the bike racing. I grew up on Grand Island. If you, any of you have followed the news over the last year or so, there was a big controversy about the bike path that's going in on their West River. If you listened to the opposition, not one bit of that would have happened, and truthfully, the people that support things don't tend to come out to meetings like this. It's the people that tend to be against it. And so, so far, I think I'm the only positive person that's spoken tonight. Um, a couple of things that I have, uh, learned from looking at that in comparison to here. Um, I moved my family to Wheatfield to have a nice neighborhood, to have an area and a place where kids could go ahead and play, ride their bikes. Riding bikes is a huge part of my family, it's what I grew up with. And my kids can't find anyone to play with because they're all inside playing video games where it's allegedly safe, on their computers, on their tablets. So when we're talking about the benefits to our local area, that's one that no one is really speaking about. Getting kids outdoors, playing and engaging, and actually learning how to socialize instead of texting the person that's sitting two feet to the left of them. Okay? Um, the second thing is, in terms of real concerns versus belief, and I gotta be honest with you, I, uh, for the business owners, and I understand that that's your livelihood and that's, that's your area, but to actually say that someone's gonna turn around, that's a inspector, if there's a sign that says, "Please proceed here, stop, we will get you through to your business," it's a very easy sign, it's something very easy to make. Any person, as you said, what if there's construction on the boulevard? We all know that there's been construction on the boulevard, okay? Uh, there's been construction everywhere, it's that time of year. So here, here's my, here's my stuff. That, the best way to look at what is gonna happen as far as future behavior is to look at past behavior. If you wanna look at the series that we are gonna be looking to piggyback, is the series that's happening in Buffalo right now in Larkin Square. Anyone that's worried about garbage, okay? All you need to do, honestly, and I'll tell you this, cyclists are some of the most anti-garbage, pro-environment groups that you've ever seen. There are a lot more people that hang out in Larkin than are gonna be hanging out initially here until this series is, is built. I never see any garbage anywhere. If I do see garbage dropped, it's not by the people actually that are participating in the bike races or those that are there to support it. But Larkin is such a big area that other people are in that area. If anything is dropped, it's picked up by someone else. There's not gonna be garbage that you're gonna have to worry about. Safety. In terms of the cyclists and going around in a, in a, a loop, um, if any of you were not here when I spoke the last time, on the Larkin Square route in Buffalo, there is a fire station on the course. Okay? They have been actively called during a race. There has never been a problem. And I'll, I'll give you this too. The firemen don't care if they go against the grain of the race. No one was ever injured. I have seen that fire station been called at least three or four times in the last couple of years. They have gone in and out with no problem. If we're able to handle it in downtown Buffalo with multiple streets, multiple businesses, businesses that are a lot larger and doing a lot more, um, sales than the ones that are talking in here, we can handle it in Wheatfield. Um, the second thing, as far as, um, the cleanliness too, is if I go to a, uh, my kids play soccer in Niagara County, and I will tell you this, the soccer players and their parents are the worst in terms of cleaning up afterwards. I spend time cleaning up after them at my own kids' games. I don't spend time cleaning up after people that are cyclists. And here's the last thing. John has spent time, and he out, also has to follow different waves of, of all this information coming in, as far as getting insurance, as far as speaking to owners, and everyone's talking about communication. Anyone here that made a complaint actually go and researched bike racing, criteria racing? Did they actually go and watch what the, the, the traffic looks like in those races? Are you aware that the professional races that are just finishing up right now in Europe go through and cross live railroad tracks? That races can be stopped if needed? That there's not gonna be an issue with local traffic, especially with all of the marshals? That's the term used for people that will guide the traffic? And, where's my last point here? Sorry, I'm, I'm so worked up, I'm, I'm frustrated. I gotta be, I've spent seven hours listening to different things like this between Grand Island and here, and everyone wants to talk about all the negative things, but no one wants to actually talk about anything, you know, that is positive. And so, the biggest thing that I would say is, is before everyone sits there, John, you guys sat there, right, for how many hours the other night?
Two hours.
Okay, and you saw how many cars and, and, between six and seven was how much?
Three trucks and twenty cars.
Okay, and that would be, and then between seven and eight?
There were no trucks.
Okay. Now, it doesn't mean that there won't be other trucks, okay? But I have sat and listened at Grand Island where people told me, okay, on a street that I grew up and riding my bike on, that there were two hundred cars an hour that were going down it, and I have ridden my bike or I have driven my car, and I have passed no more than two or three. When DOT numbers were actually presented, people were going by what they said, not what they actually saw, or not what was actually recorded. So before everyone starts worrying about all the what could happen, and you do, you need to look at those things, and, you know, business owners, I do respect you, okay? I'm an independent contractor myself, so I get it. But I think everyone is making a big concern, and I really wonder how much you've really researched it before you've come here to put your foot down and say, "Not me." Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Drive, right behind the mall. Nowakowski, N-O-W-A-K-O-W-S-K-I. Yep. I could ride my bike from my house to Walmore Road, down Walmore Road to Lockport, and ride into the park.
You know, I, I guess, I'm trying to go on some, yes.
Hi, my name's James Thompson. I am the treasurer for the Buffalo Bicycling Club.
I'm sorry, the name again, sir?
James Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-L-N.
Okay.
I'm the treasurer for the Buffalo Bicycling Club. So I just wanted to, uh, show my support for Johnsonite, to show you guys that these events are not held in a vacuum. You know, this race series would be part of a larger bike racing community in Buffalo. Um, our Buffalo Bicycling Club has six sanctioned races per year, as well as twenty club races per year. We partner with not only the Larkin District in Buffalo to run our four-race Larkin Criteria Series, we also partner with local towns, uh, such as Collins, such as Wales, such as, uh, the town of Boston, all in the South towns, so that we can hold races, um, all, all around the community, uh, for our main mission. And our main mission in the Buffalo Bike Club is to promote and, uh, develop bicycle racing in Western New York. Our Buffalo Bicycling Club has currently over seventy-five members, and these types of races, which can bring in those from out of town, also attract many more than that. So, uh, these races are being held as part of a giant bicycle community in Buffalo. Um, our club has thirteen teams that are part of the club. All of those teams have local businesses and local sponsors that help make this possible. We partner with a bunch of different bicycle shops, such as Tom's Pro Bike, such as Bert's Bicycle Shop, Shakuna Bike Shop, Handlebars Cycling Company. We have a number of different other sponsors as well. We have Independent Health on board, we have, um, we have Campus Wheel Works, we have, um, other, other, uh, businesses that do partner with us, Town Auto Group in, uh, the South towns. So these races have, um, are part of a larger community, not only of bicycle shops, but also of other businesses that help to make this possible, which is our mission of, of promoting and developing racers, um, in the community. So like, as John said, we have a number of members all racing at different levels, from, from novice to intermediate to advanced, and this can be a stepping stone for many of them onto greater things. So we just also wanna say that, especially at the Larkin, uh, Criteria Series in Buffalo, that the, the venue does benefit from having the bicycle race here. Um, you know, the businesses, uh, that attract vendors, such as food trucks, uh, such as, um, anyone who is interested in vending or selling on-site, um, you know, they can come and be part of our race, knowing that they have, you know, possibly a hundred or two hundred people there, um, for food trucks or other, or, uh, other business on-site. So we, we do partner with our local communities, and we do, you know, try and make this possible for our bicycle racing community, um, all over Western New York.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Dave? Is my speaker dead, or, I mean, is it covered twice? I thought you wanted to speak again?
Insurance for the town, is that right? You offer insurance for the businesses?
I do. I can actually, um, it's very inexpensive to add additional named insureds policy. So for only ten dollars, I can put an additional named insured. So-
What kind of limits?
I'm sorry?
What kind of limits?
Um, it's one million individual, two million liability, and four million group.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm, my, I have some concerns, I thank you for that, so, um, I, I guess this kinda got off on the wrong foot with me finding out about this. Two weeks ago, when I was here, and the meeting was canceled, right? No one called, whether it was from the town or you. So we talked about communication being the key, right?
There was a meeting over a month ago, and they got off.
And I was not informed.
David, I have to apologize.
I'm Jason.
Because I was, I, Jason?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I lost a hurry, it's a VA being repaired. You have to bear with me. Uh, I apologize for not being notified. To my understanding, anybody in the park was notified, and I'll find out why you weren't notified. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. So- And because, again, I'm a positive community guy. I mean, I sponsor professional sports teams, I sponsor veterans, I sponsor so many things I don't even, the risk for businesses, and we've heard from business owners who own the land back there, have all been positive or negative, not for it. So I think I have a pretty strong voice on behalf of the business owners. As much as I would like to support biking somewhere else, I do not support it, nor do any of the business owners support it. Those that are paying the taxes in this property, and school taxes on top of that. Too much risk for business. Just too much risk. Like the gentleman here said, any of us business owners all do the same thing. Risk versus benefit. I see nothing but risk and I see absolutely no benefit for my business. So, are you?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a couple more things I forgot about. One of them is, if you do allow this, it will be an ongoing thing for years. You're not gonna, I want to just lose one year, but that's something you should keep in the back of your mind. You want to be tied into something over a long period of time. And the other thing that I was bringing up is Mr. Nowakowski said people around here shouldn't be so nervous about it, but if he lives on the other side of Niagara Falls Boulevard, it doesn't affect him. He doesn't show his, you, you-
I've ridden my bike on almost every road in Niagara County, every road.
When you sit on your back porch, next Thursday, some Thursday night, and you wanna have a cup of coffee or a beer or whatever to drink, are you gonna hear them? You're three, four miles away. I'm next door, so it doesn't affect you like it affects me. It's not one of those not in my backyard things.
Let's address the chair, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize. People think it's not in my backyard, but that's what you have to think. It is in my backyard. I'm the guy that it bothers. Why should I have to put up with it? You know, if I asked you, if you'd like a bike ride, a bike race in your front yard or around the street in front of your house, you would probably say no.
No, I probably wouldn't, but I, you know, I don't have a business on a national road and, but I'll give you my opinions when you're, when you're through, sir.
If I may, Supervisor?
Anyone else? You know, when this originally, when we were approached by John to, about the street races, and I'm glad the businesses came here with some real concerns tonight, and Kurt is not here, so I can't speak for him, but Kurt kind of spearheaded this event for a community program, some activity for kids on bikes versus kids on computers sitting at home. And we thought that it would be a great event for the town of Wheatfield, again, if, in fact, that it could be worked out with the businesses there. We have some negative feedback, which, that's why we had the public hearing. I don't know if we could, you know, I'm just throwing this out here, I don't think we'll take any action on it tonight, there'll have to be discussion over this. But possibly if the business people that are against this would contact me and sit down with me, possibly a trial run or something. If you feel that that would not be worthwhile, then we'll just have to consider it. We thought it was a good community event. From what I understand, the noise is minimal. Insurance is more than what we would require. I know that, from what I've understood from other bike races and talking with this gentleman and some other folks here, that traffic control has not been an issue. And I know it is with you. But that was my feeling. When it first started off, they committed as a community event for not just residents of Wheatfield, people coming all over, a bicycle race. And that was our initial response, was to make it a community event for youth and adults in this area. And they don't have to be a Wheatfield resident, but it would be something for the town of Wheatfield. I have mixed feelings about it. With Jason, I understand where you're coming from, you've got a business, and this young lady in the back is representing the business, too. So I think we, we're gonna close the public hearing and we will probably not make a decision tonight. There'll be some discussion. And if you'd like to come in and see me and talk to me about your feelings further, if there's something, we'll do a trial run and see how it works. But if it doesn't, at least talk about it. And if this gentleman would like to come in and see me, too, that'd be great. Anyone that's involved. If you would like to come into my office, I'm here every day, and you wanna talk about it, if you think there's some way, think about it tonight and let me know. And we'll talk about it. If we don't think we're gonna work it out and we can't satisfy the business, Dave, you're more than welcome. If we can't satisfy the businesses, then of course, you know, we have no alternative. But if you think there's something we can do on a trial basis to address noise, insurance, things like that, maybe think about it tonight and give me a call. I make a motion to call the public hearing?
Second.